Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ashland Planning Board meeting of Thursday, April 24th, 2025. I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:18, and I want to remind the audience at home, and in the room, that the meeting is being broadcast and recorded. First on our agenda today, as always, is Clerk's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have received correspondence, one correspondence since the last planning board meeting.
Okay, and is that anything that you have to remind me? Is that something I needed to address? Because I don't remember.
I think I could probably put the generic, I feel like it's a little bit not the right answer for that, so maybe if the board approves, we should do it. Sometimes you and I craft something a little bit different.
Okay, can you just remember to give me a heads up about that?
Yeah, it was, so it was a comment about the 40B project, and I feel like, since that's not in front of our board, if I give the generic, it's going to be a little, it could be perceived as dismissive.
Okay.
So if you guys, well, it's only you right now approve.
Okay, I'll go back and look at that. All right, so next on the agenda is public comments. What's that? Well, we're going to have, obviously, public comments about other issues tonight, so are you making a general public comment? Or are you going to be associating your public comments with other things on the agenda? Okay, so if I call for a public comment right now, we can open up to public, general public comment. I don't see anyone hanging out online. So I'll address you personally, Mark. Are you good with no general public comment? Okay, all right, then we will go on to the next agenda item. And we have decided to take 401, sorry, 501 first.
Oh, great, perfect.
So I tried to text you, but I was not quite in time.
Excellent, no worries.
Okay. Okay, so then we will go on to public hearings. So no, we're not going to go out to public hearings. We're going to skip public hearings for the moment, and we're going to go down to item five on our agenda, which is a request for a minor modification to the 501 Pond Street project, and the decision was dated December 8th, 2025. Anna Tesmeniski on our board has recused herself because she is in a butter to that property. So I will turn, I will turn the podium over to you. I do not know your name.
Chris, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
So I guess I can just give a quick interest.
Yes, please.
Chris reached out to the planning office. There was a little downtime, that the email went to Peters, and then he finally came back to me just to let me know that they would like to be on the agenda because they are trying to purchase the project, that it was permitted on 501 Pond Street, and they're looking to do a minor modification. So that being said, Chris, you have the floor.
Thank you. So yeah, my name's Chris Grant with Wynn Development, and I'm joined by Michael O'Brien from Wynn Development as well. So we wanted to take the opportunity to introduce ourselves and provide a quick update on 501 Pond Street and request two modifications to the special permit. So we can jump into, oh, sorry, I think I lost it. Is that the, my apologies. So as Alvaro mentioned, we have entered into an agreement with TRASC to purchase 501 Pond Street. So we wanted to take the opportunity to introduce ourselves, for those of you who don't know or unfamiliar with Wynn Development, provide an update, and then go through and outline of the two requests. So we can start with a quick overview, I'm sorry, first, a quick overview of the team, the project team. So Wynn Development, we are the proposed developer. Icon Architecture is the architect. Angus Construction is the GC, and our attorney, Smolak, is the land use attorney. So I'll turn it over to Mike for a quick update on Wynn Companies.
Ma'am Chair, members of the committee, we're thrilled to be here tonight, talking about 501 Pond Street as a potential, but we're more pleased to be here in Ashland. We've been looking fondly at your community for years as potential opportunities, knowing there's been a lot of work done locally on planning the entire community, and certainly looking very closely at housing and how desirable Ashland is. So we've been following that closely. We've also looked at other properties on Pond Street, and at one point, we're working on the potential of the existing Shaw's Plaza to take a portion of that and transition that to housing. That did not happen, but this 501 Pond Street opportunity came before us, and we thought that this would be perfect, a perfect marriage of Wynn's companies' abilities, and not only that, but also one that would marry closely with the goals of the town of Ashland. And so with that, we're here before you, obviously, to talk about 501 Pond Street and this acquisition by Wynn Companies, Wynn Development, to turn this into what was previously an 80/20 deal, 80% market, 20% affordable, to a much more mixed income property, something I think that complements Ashland and really reflects the existing demographics of Ashland. But I'll let Chris go into those details. Wynn Companies were based out of Boston with deep roots in Massachusetts, family-owned, and we are privately held. And when you look at our portfolio between development, we also are a premier provider of military housing on some 13 military bases, and we also manage our own product. We are not merchant builders. We develop and we hold properties for perpetuity, and we manage them ourselves. So who you see here today, the company that we represent, is somebody you'll see here tomorrow and for decades to come, for those questions, comments, and also corporate citizenry and commitment to the local community. That's who we are and what we're all about. And you'll note some of the statistics here, they're very impressive. We've got some 4,400 employees across the country, and about 52% of our entire company's made up of minorities holding managerial positions. So we are reflective of the communities we work in, and we care about the places that we do business within. And beyond that, we are also a major player here in Massachusetts on policy around housing and helping forge that government and private sector partnership that makes housing and affordable housing for all incomes possible. Chris, I don't know, is there another slide with me? Yeah, so Wynn Management, I mentioned earlier, we are one of the largest affordable housing managing companies in the country, and right now, under management, approximately 120,000 apartment homes. And we work side by side with government. So from all the things that need to happen in the course of affordable housing, from compliance, reporting, making sure that all the necessary i's are dotted and t's are crossed in a very specialized world of affordable housing, we're preeminent in that field. And we do work very hard to make sure that we include in our hirings on projects, particularly across the board in Wynn Development and also Wynn Residential, is including a minority in women business enterprises. And, you know, something $240 million to date investments in that world in order to make sure that in our success, we're working side by side with those in the community that can use those opportunities to raise their prospects and futures. We also have a connected communities, which we embed into our real estate, and that connected communities is a dedicated team of folks that work to make sure that our residents have access to the resources of the community, have access to programs and other factors that can give them the services and the leg up that they need to improve their lives and certainly add value to the community as a whole. And you can see here from our government and corporate resources, we do everything in-house. And so all of that work is done, and the accountability from the top with Gilbert Wynn, right through to Wynn Development with Larry Curtis, who's the president of Wynn Development, through to the entire organization. It's one-stop shopping for those in the community or those in government wanting to make sure they can interact with our community, to a point where Gilbert Wynn will take a direct call from any of you in this room to ask a question about our company or to bring up a concern about one of our properties. So with that, I'll bring Chris back up to talk about 501 Pond Street. Again, we're excited about this opportunity. We think we can bring a dynamic, mixed-income community to 501 Pond from what was primarily a market rate project, and we've brought some other improvements to the project itself to improve the design and, I think, to improve the overall relationship with Ashland proper. So with that, thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Thank you, Mike. So as some of you may be aware, the project 501 Pond Street has been stalled for some time. So Wynn has entered into an agreement to purchase the site from TRASC Development, and we think that, you know, we have a viable path forward from a financing perspective. As I'm sure you're aware, there's a lot of constraints in the market right now. It's difficult to get housing developments started. So we have, we'd like to, you know, talk about the proposed financing plan, which would be going for bond financing and low-income housing tax credits. But, you know, in addition to having the, you know, financing path that we think is viable, Wynn was attracted to this opportunity because, you know, we think that the current ownership, as well as the planning board, did a really good job with the design. And it's something that, you know, we're excited and proud to step in and take ownership of. So, you know, to that end, we'd like to, you know, make a note that we have no plans to, you know, change the design of the facade or the overall building program. So the total unit count at 120 is remaining the same. The unit mix between one bedrooms and two bedrooms is the same. There will be, we do anticipate a couple of updates to the programming within the building to facilitate Wynn Management and the way that we like to operate the building. So to Mike's point, we operate in perpetuity. So we're long-term owners, and there's a number of things that we like to see in any Wynn developed project. I know a few examples, including an emergency generator. So, you know, that's something that we'd like to see included in this development, or, you know, the addition of a few more offices adjacent to the lobby for our onsite property management and leasing staff to have right there onsite. And then, you know, some tweaks to the amenities spaces. I think we like to see the inclusion of, you know, a room for parties that you can rent out, things like that. So there's a couple of tweaks to the interior programming, but the unit count and the unit mix between one bedrooms and two bedrooms is staying as is, as well as the outdoor and exterior features, such as the woo nerf adjacent to Pond Street and the retail space on the corner. Those are elements that we find, you know, really exciting and proud of. So wanted to touch on that. So to facilitate this financing path, we do anticipate increasing the affordable component of the project. So currently, the special permit states that 25% of the units will be affordable, 30 units at 80% AMI. So we do anticipate increasing the affordability to make this financing option work. It would be, when I say affordable, I'm referencing an income band between 30 and 60% AMI. In addition to that, we anticipate a workforce housing tier as well. So that's a tier between 80 and 120% AMI. We have another slide that talks about what that means in terms of income limits and prospective residents that may qualify in occupations within those income tiers. So we'll get to that. I think that's the next year. I'll say, we have timeline, I'll come back to timeline. So we have a slide on, you know, who will live at 501 Pond Street. So going back to those income tiers, we gave an example for the affordable tier between 30 and 60% AMI. So using a one-bedroom as an example, this is somebody who is earning between $37,000 and $74,000. So to give an example of some occupations, it's a, you know, a new police officer or, you know, a new teacher in town, as an example. For the workforce housing tier between 80 and 120% AMI, using a two-bedroom as an example, it's a range of income between $119,000 and $178,000, between the two, I think it's a three-person limit for two bedrooms. So it's a combined income. An example of a few occupations there is, you know, a firefighter, registered nurse, or a financial analyst. So project timeline, just to refresh you on the, some of the milestones to date. So the special permit approval was December 8th, 2022. The special permit expiration was December 8th, 2024. The extension, which previous ownership, ownership came before the board to have approved, was on December 9th, 2024. And the request for the modification to the special permit, which we're here before you today, was initially submitted to the planning department in April of 2025. So to, for the bond financing, finance, approach, the future timeline that we expect, you know, this would be a priority for Wynn. So we would, we would be looking to apply as soon as possible. And what that means is submitting the pre-application in Q4 2025, so November of this year. The full application would be in February of 2026. Typically, financing awards are provided, are given in spring of that year, following the full application, so June, July of 2026, and then we would be full speed ahead to commence construction in the second half of 2026. And so to make this financing path viable, we are requesting two amendments to the special permit. So the first is in relation to the general requirement 15, which states that any transfer of the special permit from the applicant to another entity must be approved by the planning board. So we are requesting the planning board's approval for TRASC to transfer the special permit to Wynn Development, which in turn, at, you know, we intend to create a special purpose entity specifically for this project. So we would ask your approval to, you know, facilitate the transfer from Wynn Development to that special permit entity as well. And second, to facilitate the increase of affordability in relation to special permit requirement one that states that 25% of the units are to be affordable at 80% AMI, we're asking for an amendment to that language to say no less than 25% of the units to be affordable at 80%, which would make the increase in affordability possible. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions. Thank you.
Yeah, so you had mentioned a workforce housing, I think you called it, from 80% to 120 of AMI. So what is that range, what does that range from 80 to 120? That would not count, I don't think, on our HSI, is that right?
So our intent is that all units will qualify for SHI, all 120.
All 120.
So it'd be similar to what the other one, if you have the percent that counts, you get to count them all, even though, so this would be the same.
But they would actually, but actually, all 120, all of 120 units would actually be below, possibly below market rate? Is that what you're saying?
We'd have a market rate component, but I think with the inclusion of the affordable housing, all 120 units within the development would qualify as SHI.
Understate regulations, based on the nature of a number of the affordable units, you hit a threshold, and it allows you to include all, particularly if you're below the statewide percentage of 10% of affordable housing, allows them all to qualify towards your SHI, so every single unit, even including market rate.
Right, right, I understood that. But when you were talking about the 25%, does that mean you're, so no less than 25%?
That's right.
Does that mean that you're looking at more than 25% would be?
Affordable.
Affordable.
That's correct, and would include the tier of workforce, which is between 80 and 120. We don't have the exact percentages of affordability levels, for instance, 30%, 60%, or 80 to 120. We look forward to reporting back through the administration, to the board, on what those exact percentages will be. But typical tiers in this might see 30% at 30%, so 30% of the units at 30%. It might show up to 50% at under 60%, so including that 30%. And then would have a tier of 80 to 120, and then a market rate. So you might only, on a project like this, have 25% market, and the balance would be 80 to 120, under 60, and then 30% or lower. And that's the way it would, a mixed-income property would be comprised. Today, we're just asking to say, to allow us to go no, or greater than 25%. So that gives us the flexibility to build that tiering. But it'll really come down to the nature of the construction costs, the ability to fill those gaps in construction costs, and working together with our government partners to come up with the exact percentages of affordability. And we're not there yet as we try to solve for all those problems.
So basically, allowing, allowing a greater level of affordability opens up different financing mechanisms for the project.
Very much so.
So ideally, it's a win-win. We get a deeper discount for residents of Ashland.
That's correct.
All of the units count, all 120 units count toward SHI, and you have a greater option of funding mechanisms to let you take over the project.
That's correct. And I would say, as a general note, to all those items being true, we found that these mixed-income properties represent the communities that we're working in and with, and they're a great complement to the community for housing availability, and we're able to make the numbers work in the real world.
I have a question. So I don't recall, I should have looked, that I don't think we got to the level of detail of, like, preference for Ashland residents on the 501 decision. And so I think especially if we're opening up for more, because I personally look at the 80% as not really affordable. I think that's a common thing. So opening it up to other income levels would be even more exciting to offer that to our community. So what are your thoughts on that? And I guess, I think, to the board, I don't think our original decision got to that level of saying local preference.
For Wynn and Wynn Development and Wynn Companies, it is more than right, and certainly something we're willing to work collaboratively with the town on, is to have a resident of Ashland preference. We'll have to submit that tenant selection plan to the Commonwealth and to those agencies for approval, but it is something that's commonplace and done elsewhere. And it's, you know, all based on federal fair housing rules. There's a lot of things that have to fall into place, but it's something that can be done, and we're more than willing to do here.
I heard you talk about some of the internal design changes, but nothing on the shell and core of the building. But I never heard you talk about the square footage of the retail, because you mentioned a corner of the building retail. But I think the way the design developed is a lot of the first floor had that retail component, because it's kind of that commercial corridor for Ashland. Did that number or the square footage getting changed because of Wynn Company standards? Because you talked about a lot of other internal programs.
We're not at that stage yet. We, currently, it's designed in the corner, as you're well aware. Our intention is to keep that.
I think it's the kind of the lower level one band that had, and remember, it was like 10,000 square feet for 501?
I don't.
I think it was less.
It was less than that. So I think it was similar, yeah, it was a corner, and then the previous felt area was calling it commercial to be some of their amenities space of, right. So it might look that way, but the actual commercial, I think, was 7,500, and it was in a corner.
That's not changing.
That's our intention. So it's currently in the corner. I can't speak to exact square footages. But it's, so if you imagine from going from the Shaw's side of the building to the left, you have lobby, amenities, retail.
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's definitely was a part of that whole design and the woo nerf and bringing the community all the way down. Like you said, it's our commercial corridor.
Yeah.
And Ashland and the state has vested a lot into the commercial part of the corridor.
Right.
And, you know, everyone's gung-ho on the housing, but we're also looking for some other, some other options, you know, in there.
Right.
So.
I just looked at the decision, the number is 6,800 square feet.
For the commercial.
Because in my head, there were like two entrances that we talked about for retail and two signage locations. So it was just not the corner, but also the other side where we talked about parking and loading and things like that. So 6,800 is what we said, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Keeping it on the woo nerf, we think is important. Right, that's that's, I think, the, we like that. It's a great, great feature to the building.
Parking is also not changing.
We, yeah, no change to parking.
Yeah, I think it's important to understand, you know, I'm, yeah, I I think it's great for anyone to start to look for more than twenty-five percent in those deeper discounts. I know that it's hard to do, right? So I think we all appreciate that. I think it's just also an understanding, you know, you guys probably know a little bit about Ashland now and that we have a lot going on in terms of housing right now, a little bit more, as much as we know, the state needs housing, the area needs housing, housing is too expensive, as much as we all know and understand that and sympathize with that. We also have two forty Bs simultaneously before our zoning board of appeals. We have other big projects coming online and we just, we have a lot, Little Ashland has a lot of on our plate right now. So we did spend a lot of time on this project and it was a little bit, oh, like kind of waiting for it to happen, you know, especially with all the new, you know, like said, the woo nerf, the the design elements we had, we had put into it. So it's just about as you move forward and looking to become a partner in Ashland to know that while we're excited about this project, it's still, it's a lot to take in when we think about this project that went through us and all the other projects that are now coming through. So we want to make sure we're doing all of those as best we can and in what we can control for the town.
Understood, and and when we were evaluating the Shaw's Plaza for a potential partnership with that owner to do new housing at that location with some shuffling of some existing real estate there, the town manager, as well as staff, were very clear about some of all these other projects and the moving parts, as well as capacity issues, sewer issues, concerns about public schools and the like. And that all went to our decision to say best we not continue to pursue that path. That's why we were excited about this opportunity with TRASK, an existing project that already went through the detailed vetting here at the planning board and throughout the community. And being able to participate, our desire to want to be part of the Ashland community because of all the qualities that are so obvious. And and so that's why we're pursuing this potential. And our hallmark is working side by side with the the town administration will be communication. So we'll be making sure every step along the way, when we finalize the percentages of affordability, like we spoke on, we'll make sure that that's communicated through staff, so you get the direct information from us through staff to you about what those final tiers look like, as well as anything else that occurs on the site. That's important that the the community know as we progress, following the rules that you've set within the existing permit, as well as the two changes we're asking for tonight. We tend to over communicate, so there may be a point in time you say we're good to go, but in the meantime, you'll know everything we're doing and why. And we'll follow the rules as as outlined in the permit. We do have some time sensitivities. The existing ownership, this has taken some time to get to this point, and again, the town manager and staff have been fabulous to to get this on. We have to sign basically final agreements to purchase the property. We'll purchase it outright from that ownership group. Typically, we close everything altogether and then we pursue the construction at that point in time. In this transaction, because of pressures based on a market rate seller and the work that we do, we'll actually have to go forward and purchase the property. So if we were able to get a decision tonight on this, it would set us up in perfect order to be able to go forward, close and buy the property and fulfill our purchase and sale agreement that we have with them. And then we'll basically be owner of that property well in advance of the construction that was outlined by Mr. Grant in the earlier presentation.
This is a little out of, a little room of thought here, but I I missed your name and I want.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael O'Brien. I'm an executive vice president in Wind Companies. I have a card I can give to the board. And I am basically second in command on the ownership group with Gilbert.
Thank you.
On the company side versus Wind Development, which is a subsidiary in the company.
Okay, I I guess this is sort of more of a statement, and I I think from what I'm hearing that that's the right partner. But particularly since the board, a lot of the work was done before I was on the board of getting a project that the board felt would be good for Ashland. And we, you know, we sort of, over time, experienced that, that's still high level design. And so when you, I'm going to communicate on behalf of the board, I think when you get to that detailed design, like, please over communicate and don't, don't start building with something needs to change. And you already talked about a generator and that our designers on the board are going to be sensitive where that goes and like, then you're going to have screening and we're going to be sensitive about the kind of plants you put for screening. And I I, what I'm hearing from your presentation is, of course, you're going to do that, right? Of course, you're going to be a good partner. So I'm not trying to say that insulting, but I'm I'm going to speak up for us and the community that that is absolutely an expectation, that if there's a change, anything, it, we know about it before it gets too far down the road.
And and we will do that, we'll work obviously in tandem with the with the town manager and and staff, but we'll do any of that. Disregarding the idea of change, our goal is not to make change, but just communicating along the way. So you're at a real comfort level with the fact that we're doing, meant what we said, said what we meant, and our proceeding has per the permit. Anything else, we'll make sure that you get all the information firsthand.
I think that that was, that was good to know. We have a we have been talking a lot about the difference between a project that goes through the planning board and what percentage that is in its in its development from design to construction documents. And then about naturally, some of the changes that just happen after things are approved here. But how we make sure that the changes that may be very necessary to happen in a project after they leave here, how we make sure that they're still acceptable to the board that accepted the project.
Sure.
You know, so those are the types of concerns that we have.
We'll live by the permit. We understand the sensitivity and importance of those permits. And and just out of courtesy, we'll bring forward those plans for continued conversation, recognizing that, you know, it's a challenge to make sure these projects work in the economy. But we're always going to use that permit as our guide through those challenges. And any derivation from that, we recognize is jurisdiction of the board.
And I think the other thing is that as this, you know, as our town council, you know, obviously reviewed and helped us to write these parts, especially the parts having to do with with the affordability component of the decision, that we'd, we would absolutely, though we could take a vote of support about we, about what we talked about tonight, we would want, obviously, that reviewed by town council before we would, before we would sign off on it.
So that's on the affordability, the amendment we're asking for, item number two?
On on the, yeah, on on what you're asking for, the the first thing is to just have it be approved by the planning board, right? That was thing number one, which is what we're talking about tonight.
Yes.
Right, but to have, to make sure the actual change in every is something that our town council says is is correct in the way we're doing, going about it.
So the over twenty-five percent that the town council would be able to look at that and verify, we did over twenty-five percent.
So on behalf of the board, I'll draft like a memorandum explaining what are the changes. I will check in with town council, make sure that everything is okay, and then it will come back to the board for them to final approval and sign it. And then we can move forward and send it back to you and we'll put it on the file. So when anybody's looking at the decision, they can see what was the change and the minor modification that happened.
Sure. All that is understood and understanding protocols and timelines. A vote of the board this evening in the affirmative with details to follow would certainly give us the assurances to proceed with the transaction, which is time sensitive. We have to buy the land and without these approvals, we would be at risk if we didn't have a vote tonight.
Right, so the the two things are to permit the transfer of ownership, to provide a different company to take over the project. As we've been, that would be thing number one. Another thing, number two, would just be to change the language to no less than twenty-five percent, meaning affordability versus the twenty-five percent. And like I said, it's just because that part of our, that part of our decision was written, approved, reviewed by town council. And so any changes in it needs to go through that same process as far as I'm.
If we can do both, I think we'll be in good shape on our side and certainly meet and exceed the expectations of the of the of the planning board and the community. To have the vote with, you know, final language and and approvals subject to the document drafted by the town council.
Well, from my perspective, I mean, I'm I'm really happy with everything you've said here today and our understanding of the project about it staying the same, sensitivity to the community and the load that we and only the planning board is holding, but the zoning board of appeals is holding, you know, the whole town at this point in time. But and and appreciate that they, that actually that there's these other, other means of financing that can allow this affordability to go deeper instead of being something that's really, yes, it's less than market rates. But is it really helping that young police officer or something, or the teacher in town to to be able to stay in town? So so I I appreciate those moves. I'm glad those are the changes, I'm glad those are the changes coming before us tonight.
We're glad to bring them forward. We're excited to be here.
Any other comments?
M B T A community list, is that going to have any implication for them?
It should not, I mean, you know, are you aware of that?
Yes, yeah, we've worked during the process of of M B T A communities legislation. We were engaged since it's been passed and implemented, we've been participating in our in communities where it applies. So there's nothing here other than furthering that goal that's engendered in the M B T A Communities Act.
Yeah, so they, so this project, this application was not part of the M B T A Communities Act then and nor is it part of the M B T A Communities Act now. It is just, it would, it's just going to be under the Pond Street Overlay District.
Okay, okay.
That's right. You'll certainly meet the goals of the M B T A.
Yeah, I think all that you said sounds so positive, and I think as a team, we are all looking forward for this project to really come to life. I'm just curious, like, I noticed that it's the same design team that worked with us at the beginning. How do we make sure that again, with all the projects that we worked at that time, I don't remember how, where we landed with all the finishes and kind of all the exterior materials? And how do we make sure that along the process, after all of us are gone, that design intent is carried forward with the rest of the planning board?
So the the design team.
Because the team won't come back in front of us after this, right?
Well, if they follow that exactly, they should not have to, just like TRASK wouldn't have to. If they want to deviate, they shall come back here.
That's right.
Yeah.
So I think we're fine. It's the same as TRASK to us if there's no changes.
That's correct. That's correct, but we will still go through the process of working with the town manager and staff. We'll make sure that those fit and finishes and things are something that we submit just for their review and and ensuring that the that those standards are met.
So the decision that we had when TRASK submitted will still hold good for your project.
That's correct. But again, in that world of over communicating, the team, the city, the town team will will understand what we're doing, because we'll have given them that information.
Please. I make a motion that the planning board approve a request, five oh one Pond Street, an amendment to general condition number fifteen that allows for a transfer to new ownership and a change to special condition number one on affordability, which would provide for a potential to increase the affordability and change the affordability percentage. Subject to review and approval by town council.
Is there a second?
Second, bye.
And a roll call.
Beep, boing, goodbye.
Catherine Jersey guy.
And Tricia Kindleay. So so I can, I can start working on that.
I'll follow up with town council and then we should have back all that information for May eighth, which is the next planning board meeting to finalize, sign it, and then from there I can send you the finalized document.
Thank you so much. On behalf of Wind Companies, we're very grateful for the work of the team to get us to be able to come before you tonight to hear this, these changes, and we're certainly grateful to the planning board for hearing the petitions and obviously your favorable vote, and we look forward very much to working with you and in the town to see this project come to fruition. We're excited, excited to be in Ashland. It's a wonderful community. We look forward to being a part of it and we're going to be a good corporate citizen as well, so.
Right.
Expect to see us around.
Thank you, thanks for your admission.
Thank you very much.
Okay, oh, there she is. All right, so we will go back to item four on our agenda, which is the public hearings. And these are for three bylaws that are on the warrant for May seven, for May seventh. So what we're going to tonight, this is a public hearing for all three of those bylaws. One is section seven point six accessory dwelling units or A D U's, section eight point one floodplain overlay district, and section nine point four point three point, nine point four point five point three, which is just a small change in our review process. So I think we'll just, we'll take them in in that order.
Madam Chair, do we, with public hearing, it's been tradition, we read that? Do we have to just?
I guess just for the record, yeah.
I think we usually read. I don't know that we need to, but I'm just.
For the.
Like the legal ad.
Yeah. Legal ad, I will read the legal ad, unless you want to. I'll read it. So the legal ad, twenty twenty-five town meeting zoning articles. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, chapter forty A, section five, the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five at seventeen, seven fifteen P M on proposed amendments to the Ashland zoning bylaws. Changes are being proposed to, one, comply with updates in the FEMA Federal Emergency Management Agency watershed maps and N F I P National Flood Insurance Program. Two, update the current A D U accessory dwelling unit bylaw to meet the new state regulations as per the Massachusetts section eight of chapter one fifty of the Acts of twenty twenty-four. And three, to update the language of section nine point four point five point three of the Ashland bylaws, which is the procedure for site plan review and design plan review, to have a consistent filing and application process within the planning department. Hopefully, everyone understood that. This hearing will be held in person in Ashland Town Hall in the select board hearing room, second floor, and remote participation is available via Zoom video conferencing platform. To join this meeting via Zoom, please see the planning board agenda. The proposed zoning amendments will be to the following sections of the Ashland zoning bylaws under chapter two eight two. I actually just read them, but I'll read them again. A, section seven point six accessory dwelling unit, A D U. Section or number, letter B, section eight point one floodplain overlay district, F P O D. C, section nine point four point five point three procedures for site plan review and design plan review. Ooh, okay. So again, the first one of those we are going to look at is the accessory dwelling unit. So briefly, the the state, and I don't remember what the date was, but the state in the in the last year passed regulation that allows A D U accessory dwelling units in all communities for single family in single family zoning districts.
Yes.
Right? So what this does, what this bylaw does is simply bring our bylaw, where we did, we did have a bylaw for accessory dwelling units, but to bring that up to the size required by the state. by the state and also make sure that it allows, um, the accessory dwelling unit to be available, basically as a rental unit that doesn't, it does not have to be a family unit to be in line with state regulations. So we do have copies of the bylaw in the room. They're also, are they able to see it up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, um, up on the screen. And, um, and they're also available on the planning board website as well. So. I think it's my own copy here. All right. I don't know if we went to read this whole bylaw. I don't think we want to do that. But I do, I do want to go through, um, the important points of the bylaw, and those would be found in the second section, 7.6.2, um, the definitions. So the definition of an accessory dwelling unit, according to the new bylaw, and this is a definition, um, that has come from the state, is that the accessory dwelling unit maintains a separate entrance, either directly from the outside or through an entry hall or corridor shared with the principal dwelling unit, sufficient to meet the requirements of the building code for safe egress, A. B, it's not larger in gross square area than one half the gross floor area of the principal dwelling, or 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. So the size of the ADU can be no larger than 900 square feet. And if it, it's going to always be between half the dwelling size and 900 square feet, whichever is smaller. And number C, uh, the accessory dwelling units are subject to such additional restrictions as may be imposed by the municipality, including but not limited to additional size restrictions and restrictions on prohibitions of short-term rental as defined by Mass General Law, um, 6G, or sorry, 64G. However, no municipality shall unreasonably restrict the creation or rental of an ADU that is not a short-term rental. So that was just a basic understanding of what the ADU is. There's also a lot more definitions as a part of our bylaw. We wanted these to be within the bylaw itself at the present time so that we make sure that the bylaw is very clear. I guess I can go over the general requirements. I think it's appropriate to go over the general requirements or just go into discussion?
I think it, um, it would be, so our basic in keeping is its compliance with state law, and if there's a few things that we did, which were very few, and they're also in compliance with state law. I think it'd be good to point out.
Yeah, I would say the stuff we should point out is the short-term rental issue, the parking issue, because we were really, we spent a lot of time thinking about the half mile versus mile. I recall those were the big two things that are sort of, hey, this entire thing is consistent with state law, and the state gave us some ability to address these two things. Here's how we address them.
Yeah, so I guess the main points there was.
That's what I remember.
Yes, that, that we, um. So in looking at, um, well, let me start with some of the general requirements, because I think there's some things in there too, that, um, that the ADU is only, is allowed in zoning districts which, which allow by right, single-family residential dwellings. No more than one ADU shall be permitted for each principal dwelling unit, and not, not more than one ADU shall be permitted per lot. So you cannot have multiple, you cannot have multiple ADUs on a single lot. The ADU in the principal dwelling unit shall remain on the same lot and shall not be divided into two separate lots, and the ADU shall not be utilized as a short-term rental. In the next section, we talk about exterior appearance and size, and this is besides what I was talking about, um, earlier. The ADU needs to be fully located within the dimensional setbacks of the zoning district that are already spelled out in the bylaws. So a house, a house would need to conform to those, um, bylaws, and the ADU needs to conform to those bylaws as well. Where the ADU has an entrance on the front facade of the dwelling, the ADU entrance shall be secondary in appearance to the entrance of the principal dwelling unit. All stairways to an ADU connected above the first floor shall be enclosed within exterior walls or located on size other than the street. And, um. Driveways, oh, driveway shall be designed in conformance, in conformance with the regular zoning bylaws, um, with the exception of allowing a common, a common driveway. Sewage, parking, and as far as parking, one parking space with the exception of properties within one-half mile of transit station need to be provided. So if the property is within, within a half a mile of, um, a transit station, a parking space, an off-street parking space does not need to be provided, but if it is greater than one-half mile from a transit station, um, the, the lot would need to provide one off-street parking space.
Can I just make a comment before we get hate mail to the planning board, that that's the state law?
Yes.
We, we could not require, if you're within half a mile of a transit, we are not allowed to require an off-street parking.
Right, okay. Thank you. Yeah, and I think those are the, I think those are the, the major parts of the, of the bylaw. We will open it up for questions, um, both in the room and online. I'm sorry? I think we have discussed this a lot, and so we're happy to just go to the public.
Back to Sony 119 Main Street. And I'll be coming up with all three of these articles that's coming up. The dwelling basically is a single-family house for, for this dwelling accessory unit, right?
I missed the first part of that. What did you say?
The, the accessory dwelling unit is of one single-family house.
It's a dwelling unit. So a house is a particular type of dwelling unit, so I, I hesitate to call it a house. It's a home.
Okay, um, housing unit, how's that?
Yes, by the definitions given, it's a dwelling unit, a housing unit.
Okay, and then this is a number two, which I don't think you, you already might have. The dwelling unit, the single housing unit, provide complete independent living facilities for one person, one persons, including permanent provisions for living, sleeping, eating, cooking, and sanitation. How many rooms can a maximum of one family housings can have? What's the max?
And for any house or for the ADU?
For this ADU.
There, there's no restriction on the amount of rooms. Like, it could be a single big studio space, right? You don't have to, like, a very modern layout without any rooms. You might want one for the bathroom. Um, or it can be divided into many rooms as long as those, as long as those rooms would meet the state building code.
How many bedrooms in this?
There's no limit on the amount, the amount of bedrooms isn't given. So that's not, it, that's up to the, um, that's up to the, the owner who builds it, and, um, yeah, really up to the owner who builds it.
It's up to the developer to say from there, how much, how many rooms are going to be in once he makes it, or he makes that one housing frame.
How many rooms are going to be?
The developer has the right to say how many, how many rooms will be in the, in the, in the frame foundation, in his site plan, in his inside, interior plan.
Right, that is, that is not up to, that is not regulated by the bylaw or, or by the state about how many rooms there are.
Okay.
It's just the, the building code and the sanitary code, is that, that you would apply?
Right, as long as it, as long as what is being proposed adheres to the, the building code.
Right.
Right, and, and other state codes. Right, but it's not necessarily divided into rooms.
So as a non-experienced person, as a regular citizen, I did tiptoe around it, and thank you, Kay, for bringing that up. Protected use of ADU, attached and detached ADU that is located is proposed or be located on a single-family residential zone and district and is protected by the Mass General Law 40A 8.3, provided that only one ADU may quantify as protected. What happens if there's an extended room or garage?
What do you mean by an extended room or garage?
Okay. Attach or detach ADU that is located, what does detach mean?
A detached unit would mean that it's, it sits apart separately from the, from the house. It has its own building envelope.
Could be a garage, could be a porch, it could be anything that's away from the frame of the main house.
Right.
That's what detached means, and that's what this protected uses for ADU. Uh, the requirements, no exterior size, no, um, disposal of sewage. Adequate precision of being made by the plan, water, who's paying for that, the town or developer? In the disposal of sewage.
So the, uh, an ADU would operate the same way as a single-family house does. So it would be, the, in, in a sense, there's not, the developer would be the owner of the house. So there wouldn't be like a sep, you could, you would have a builder, obviously someone that would come and build it, but the owner of the house would be the one who would develop.
They would be paying Ashland sewer rates as for disposable costs.
Yeah, they would, if they're using the Ashland sewer, they would pay, an ADU would pay and the single-family home, yes.
I'm actually, I'm actually pretty good here. Now, the last one, 7.6.8 nonconformities. If an attached ADU is proposed by a pre-existing nonconforming, single-family primary residence requirements of section 8.3 of the zoning bylaws shall apply, provided that it's an event with special permit is required. No special permit may consider the ADU or an imposed condition on such use. Why is that last sentence there if the zoning bylaw is going to apply?
Um, I think I understand your question. So if, if the house is nonconforming and wants to add an ADU, it may need to go in front of the zoning board of appeals to get a special permit for the nonconformity, but it does not need to get a special permit simply to be allowed to do an ADU. So a nonconforming house can apply for an ADU as well, but the nonconformity would need to be addressed by the zoning board of appeals.
So how strong would the ADU, may consider the ADU used as an imposed condition? How strong is that compared to the zoning bylaw?
I don't think I understand the question.
Does it compare with the bylaw, or is it as, as not to use it and use the ADU imposed conditions?
If I understand correctly, Mark, I think that they will still follow what is described here as an ADU, but they will still have to follow the nonconformity go through the CBA. So it will be following these as an ADU, but like Tricia explained, you will still have to go through the CBA for them to give you a allowance to make changes to a nonconforming house.
And would that work as with using a special permit?
So anything in front of the ZBA would be a special permit, or?
It's not in the paragraph here, it's the word special permits, but I was going to say, if the developer wants to have a special permit, does he have to go through the nonconformities part of this ADU paragraph?
That will be section 3.3 of the zoning bylaw, because sections 3.3 of the zoning bylaw is for the special permit.
That's it, thank you.
Are we ready for a motion?
Well, let me just, if, if there's any other questions, um, online? No? Okay, uh, sure.
I make a motion that the planning board approve the amendment to go to town meeting floor, amend town of Ashland's zoning bylaws, 7.6 accessory dwelling, accessory family dwelling unit, um, with the updated language.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote?
Beep, boing, kahday.
Anna Tschetsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So, um, that is supported by the planning board to go, um, to town meeting. Next one on the agenda is for the, um, the floodplain overlay district. I know we have Becca Solomon, um, the conservation agent online to help us out with this one, because it's a little complex. Anna, if you don't mind, I need to step out a minute. Could you? Thank you.
So for this one, Becca, do you want to tell us a little bit about how this came about and give us some background?
Uh, sure. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
All right. So the shorthand of this is that the, um, FEMA had to, had just updated their floodplain maps for parts of the Charles River watershed, which Ashland does have a couple areas within. And because those were updated, the first thing that had to happen is that our existing floodplain bylaw needed to be revised to refer to the most recent, um, squares on those maps that they were showing. And then the second thing that's happening is that they're updating the minimum requirements for these overlay districts to basically require, clarify things, and then also be a little bit more stringent on what's permitted and what's not permitted in floodplain, mostly to protect residents. If you put a bunch of structures in something, the floodplain level rises, and that's the big concern there. So all of this is meant to help protect people from that. So I know, um, Peter before me on some previous meetings went over in more detail the changes that were put in. Um, I know Alvaro was there as well, um, so I'm not going to waste your time going over the entire thing, but if there are specific questions you all have, I'm happy to answer it.
So to sum it, Becca, would it be accurate to say that this is consistent with the FEMA changes, and essentially we are required to do this?
Yes.
Okay. I don't think there's a particular section that I recall that we.
No, I would just add that much of it was, again, taken from a draft state law recommendation.
Exactly, and I don't recall us changing anything. We, we essentially followed the state reg.
Yeah, we basically followed what was given by the state, and then the major changes were just taking out the sections that were not really relevant to Ashland. So back in that sense, helped us a lot to just double-check that areas of coastal mention or things like that would be out of it. We don't have a coastline, so like, for example, the section that is right now in front of us, that's really the, what we were looking at, because it has the updated dates that the FEMA maps have been coming up. So that was one of the main requirements that were given to us, um, in that. And then the other language was just to clarify what were the special permits. So section 1.5, um, just to kind of like mainframe it and make sure that it will be sent to the conservation commission, even though they already will receive all this information because of the floodplain, but just this bylaw will clarify that, basically.
Okay. Does the planning board have any comments or anything we want to add before we open it up to the public?
I don't.
And with that, do we have any public comment online?
Not at this moment.
And in the room? Nope, he said he's good.
Again, Mark, sorry, 119 Main Street, and I, I thank Becca for explaining that and for the board to look at this. I'm on the page, I got the town warrant in my hand, by the way, that's why I'm going by. What does it mean by functionality dependent use, which means a use which cannot perform its intended purpose unless it's located or carried outward in close proximity to a water? The term includes only darkened, I'll cut to the chase. How many times do we have a, do we have the reservoir, have to use a floodplain rule? How many times?
I think, Mark, you're referencing the definition 8.1.2. I think, Mark, you're referencing the definition eight point one point two E, functionally dependent use. Is that what you're referencing?
Yes.
And you're asking how that applies to our reservoir?
Our reservoir, any waterways that has boats on it.
So, your question is how would this apply to the Ashland reservoir?
Any waterways in Ashland that allows boats to be put so they can go on that water.
Becca or Alvaro, is there a way for us to clarify that? How the functionally dependent use applies with our waterways?
I can try and take a stab at this one. And Alvaro, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is one we copied straight over that was in the required, the parts from the draft that was provided to us. But it's essentially referring to any activity, any use that you would need to do that cannot be done unless you're near the water. So, if you're putting in a dock, which we think docks like the harbor, it could also be like a kayak or canoe launch is also a dock because you might be tying it off at the dock there. Or you see it less than Ashland, but I can think of like North Pond where they have your own personal docks or Washaken Pond in Ashland, some people have some personal docks for their boats. This could relate to that and Washaken Pond does have floodplain on it. So, it could refer to that.
Okay, and down to the bottom, it says, port facilities are necessary for the loading and unloading of cargo. There's nothing like that here in the Ashland town boundaries to have that happen. Yes or no?
I don't believe there is anything currently or planned, but people do make these regulations in order to plan for the long distant future that we can't see. So, I think we're required to have it was what we came to the conclusion and Alvaro, correct me if I'm wrong on that, but just because it's in there doesn't mean that we're expecting to actually have that.
Yeah, it was something that it's just, my understanding is just to put in as one of, or help to understand some of the information that will follow the by law as the state mandates.
And to keep on going and finish the paragraph off is cargo and passengers in shipbuilding and ship repair facilities. We're not on the ocean, are we?
So, Mark, I think to Becca's point is there's standard language in here that we cut and pasted from proposed language that may not apply exactly to Ashland, but it's standard.
Okay, and this will be my last question and why, why we're pointing it. Then, why is this whole paragraph functionally dependent in this for a national town meeting to take a vote on?
I think it's there as a definition paragraph just to explain examples of what functionally dependent use might mean in different situations, some of which apply to Ashland right now, some of which don't really apply, but it's meant to be more of a definition, just to give people an idea of what the words might mean.
So, when we do get Washaken and have the dock sits on the, on Leonard Road of Washaken in Ashland, they got their own docks. That's about the only small thing that there is of this whole paragraph. There's no ships, there's no repair stuff.
I think you're right that we don't have any ships or cargo right now.
Right.
But it's just used as an example of what functional dependent use might mean in different communities. So, it's kind of like a cut and paste paragraph that can apply to fifteen different communities and each community will kind of know what it means based on what's happening there.
Okay, last, very, very last thing. I'm building up energy for this. And it's a small one. The structure means for floodplain management purposes or wall and roof building, including a gas liquid storage tank that is principally above ground as well as manufactured homes. U S Code of Federal Regulation tied to forty-four points for that. Where is, where is that going to be put if it gets voted in? Is there gonna be a liquid storage tank?
So, that's also the definitions section. So, you're, you're looking at eight point one two definitions.
Page twenty-eight, yeah.
Structure. So, that doesn't say that we're gonna add these structures. It's just explaining what structure might mean in a community.
Okay, then, I know that some of these are just to put in as placeholders to fill in once it doesn't pass and for maybe down the future, down the road. But if it's not gonna be realistic that it's gonna happen, then they shouldn't be in here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other public comment in the room? Being none, is there a motion on this particular zoning amendment? There was none earlier.
I make a motion that the planning board approve the submission of the town of Ashland zoning by law, section eight dot one floodplain overlay district.
I'll second that.
Deepa Wangi, aye.
Anna Tesmeneski, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Thank you, Anna. All right, so, the third by law we are discussing tonight is section nine point four point five point three, procedures for site plan review and design plan review. This is, if I can get to my sheet here, a small change. We have found that the special permit process, correct? Uses this designation of the amount of days, sixty-five days, upon receipt of an application. Special permits are, processes are set by the state where the site plan review and design plan review is, process is set by Ashland. So, we wanted to have our, as often on a project, a special permit and a site plan review happen simultaneously. We wanted the timing of these things to be able to happen simultaneously to make the process a lot smoother, a lot more smooth and to allow us to keep track of it a lot better. So, the things could be really going in tandem and that's really the only reason for the change. Is anything anyone wanted to add to that?
It's not coming out of her hat, right? That sixty-five days has a logic behind it.
Yep, it will match the same timing that the special permit has. So, when an application comes in for site plan review and special permit, when they usually check both of those boxes on an application, that will just make the project basically follow the exact same timeframe.
So, if there's no other questions for the board, we'll open it up to public comment in the room and online?
No comment online.
Pretty soon you're gonna get bored of me, I can understand that. Mark Sony, one nineteen Main Street. I'm gonna get the no address back and forth now, okay. To amend the town zoning by laws nine point four five point three procedures for site plan review and design plan review, removing the strike through language and replace it with the following. Sixty-five days, it used to be ninety, yes or no?
No, it was the remark, if you're referring to the language here.
Yeah, the language. Shall hold a public hearing within sixty-five days. Okay, let me read it completely. Okay, within sixty-five, and the receipt of the receipt of the application. Notifications shall be provided in compliance with M G L, Mass. General Law, shelter forty A, section eleven. The applicant, why is the word his crossed out? Is there a difference, his or her?
We don't know what is the gender of the agent that might be following the process. So, I guess that's just to make it more.
Diverse.
Diverse.
Okay, and shall be attended such and meet and such, the A meeting is crossed out, public hearing. Is that supposed to be because it's basically the same thing?
I guess a meeting was a little bit broad while a public hearing is the formal process that Mass. General Law, chapter forty A, section eleven points out. So, we all will always make a public hearing for special permit or site plan review so that just matches the language of the general law.
The shall, in order to assist the planning board's wanted the public questions and concerns. That's the public hearing, okay. Failure to attend shall be deemed lack of compliance with the requirement of this chapter. Now, why is it a failure to attend shall be deemed lack? Is this on the developer's part, the planning board, or what?
Yes, the applicant or the agent would be required to attend the public hearing, it seems. It's hard to have a public hearing with no applicant, so it's just putting that in writing.
Okay, and this is one of my old question, I answered, I don't know, some years ago. What happens if the applicant, the developer asks for more than, let's say, three continuances? What happens?
I don't think there's any limit on the amount of continuances they can require as long as the, as long as the town and the applicant agree on the continuance, it can go forward.
And what happens in between if there's a change of contract developers that's not the same as the original?
I think the, I think those parts aren't a part of the change with the by law that we're considering. And so, those aren't the changes we're looking at tonight, Mark, so we don't need to go into too much detail.
Because I'm just saying, because the last, last planning board meeting was another development that had a change of owners and it went on with a different name, owners.
Right, but that's not applicable to this by law.
That's why I'm not gonna mention the agenda name. Thank you.
Thank you.
No comment online?
Motion? I make a motion that the planning board approve town of Ashland zoning by law, change section nine dot four dot five dot three procedures for site plan review and design plan review as presented.
I'll second that.
Deepa Wangi, aye.
Anna Tesmeneski, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So, our bylaws are now ready for a town meeting. Okay. Next on our agenda, just gonna thank Becca, but she's already gone.
Can I just mention something quick out? I'm actually gonna be out of town, not at the town meeting, but are you, are we doing a presentation or are you? Okay, and that's you presumably?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll be, I'll be doing the presentation, there's less to.
Yeah.
Not a lot of visuals for these.
No, I just think it's helpful and if we're allowed in that, confirming that you would.
Yeah, to answer questions and to present it and answer questions.
Yeah, and also Becca, I talked to Becca, so she will be, she will make herself available for any questions about the floodplain, so she also is gonna be pressing there to answer any questions.
Okay, so, next on our agenda is, is a public hearing, two forty to two sixty Pleasant Street, the Metro West Facilities LLC. This is the soccer fields and they, I think everyone got that they requested a continuance until, until May eighth. Do you have information on why the continuance was requested?
So, there is, I think, two sides to it. One of them is on Tuesday, on Wednesday morning, they received a report from the design review committee, which I think it was also forwarded to all the boards, so they are looking at that part. The other piece of it is that after they received the scope of work from the peer review, they were looking at the pricing, so they have not yet agreed to the pricing on it. So, they are looking to see if they will request the board to look for a different peer review. They have not made a decision yet, so that has slowed down a little bit the process of that. So, before it's moving forward, we, they will need to decide if they would like to move forward with the peer review that we currently use, which is G C G. Or if they make a request for a new peer review, then we will have to look for basically options of peer review that will come to the board, the board will feel comfortable with them and then they could do that process.
So, that's kind of a big deal since G C G has been accepted by the town forever, since I've been here and I'm sure longer, which is more than twenty years. And so, we, I don't know if we can talk about it here on the agenda, but we do need to talk about a process for vetting a backup. I mean, we don't have to until it happens, but I think we should make sure we have a solid process for vetting a alternate.
Yeah, this is what, Alvaro and I have been talking about this since it came up, obviously, since Peter's not here. And it hasn't come up before, this is obviously a small project. And so, yes, G C G has been our go-to and obviously, I personally have been extremely happy like with their work. But we also thought there, it might be good, we were trying to get information if towns have typically, you know, a backup, you know, versus having just, just one, you know, just, just one consultant in this way. So, but, but obviously, thinking about that process now, like Alvaro said, finding people and vetting them is going to take some time. So, it's kind of G C G and their price or this other potential option, but it's gonna take some time because we would not rush into that lightly.
So, so this could get sensitive, A, about timelines and then who, who controls that? If we have a process that we have had forever and the applicant's asking for something different, how do we stop the shot clock, so to speak, on the time that a decision's due? That's one thing. And then, secondly, I do have other comments that I just don't want to violate open. I'm not clear if it was said, it was continuance if we can discuss things or if we have to wait to put it on the agenda.
Well, I think the project is on the agenda.
Even though it's required, okay, well, then I, should I have some other comments then related to that?
Well, I think if you have comments related to that process, yeah, because it's something we need to work on. So, obviously, the applicant isn't here, so we're not gonna be talking about the project per se.
Okay, it's sort of related and you can say we have to wait. If, so, my understanding, and I believe Peter said this before they left, they were changing or potentially changing to a non-natural turf. But the stuff they submitted for the application was based on natural turf, which is, so we, that is no longer a valid application. Now, I'm not saying that everything has to go to zero, but what we're asking someone to look at may not be applicable. So, I, I don't want us to have them, when they come back later, say, hey, by the way, you owe us new data, but hey, by the way, you owe us new data and we should tell them sooner rather than later.
So, in other words, giving the consultant an application that's not accurate is a problem?
It is not based on what we are hearing that they want to do, is one thing.
Can we ask the applicant to essentially amend or fix the application prior to submission to the consultant?
Yeah.
Well, for the peer reviewer, well, the peer reviewer will make those questions usually. I honestly never seen it within the planning board, but I've been able to see it within the C B A. And often, if there is any change from the original application that the developer is mentioning, the peer review will ask for those new calculations, if it's stormwater in this case or if anything is changing in terms of materiality so they can understand what will be that impact.
But, so, G C G presumably doesn't watch our meetings, though, is what I'm saying. We have to communicate to them. I'm saying, I'm offering being proactive and getting in touch with the applicant and saying, if you go forward with this change, you need to update the calculations for stormwater.
Yes.
Instead of waiting till they're in front of us again next time, potentially, May eighth. I, I don't think we, I assume we would be professional and offer that ahead of time.
Offer what ahead of time?
Offer, telling them that the calculations for a natural turf field.
Right, yeah.
Need to be redone for if you're changing it, right? That's one. And then, secondly, that parcel, I believe, is in the groundwater protection overlay district. And I believe if you start looking online of a synthetic turf field, there's potential for leaching. And I am not a scientist, I'm not pretending to be a scientist, but I'm pretending to be smart enough to ask those questions. So, we, as a board, have to figure out what that means and what we're going to do for resources or wait, again, we can wait till they put it in front of us, but they, I heard that from the town planner. I did not hear that from the applicant.
I assume that's, I assume that's also part of the continuance, I don't know. Because I know, you know, obviously, in the design review committee notes, that was cited as a very big issue. as a very big issue, right? So it's not, it's not, it's there, right?
No, I, I assume it is, I'm just saying, to be fair, we haven't heard it from, we haven't heard it from the applicant, the board.
Right, right.
But, I, I think it's kind of a big deal, and I don't think any of us are scientists on the board, and nor would we probably want to cross and use our professional work in that way on the board, so we have to figure that out.
Right, no, definitely, I, I think it is a big deal, that change, it's not, yeah, so, yeah, just kind of two things going on right now, the, the applicant having a chance to, appropriate time to respond to all the information they've just been given, and this simultaneous thing going on about questioning the cost of using GCG. Now, I think the planning board can have a, you know, obviously, a voice about that, no, this is who we use, and we don't feel comfortable with anyone else, that, that is one take. My take, when I was talking about it to Alvaro, is that that's who we use, but in my own practice, I have found sometimes that I needed to have a plan B, and so I also didn't think it was a bad idea for the town to have other places they might call, if, say, there was a conflict of interest, or, or something like that, right? So it just came, it kind of just brought up, well, maybe this is something we should understand, do other towns have more than one, you know, maybe Lisa Mead has a, has some experience with that, like, do we have the, our team in place for the town that we should have, is just a part of that question, so.
So, back to the shot clock, though, because I, I would have belts and suspenders have the plan B, but we have a, we have a applicant in front of us, that we are, do not have a B, and so we, we have to work on that, but, and I think in good faith, we should probably try to investigate that, to say, are we prepared to offer that, but I'm not sure, we certainly can't do it under the shot clock time.
Right.
And so, if that's the case, and we're not stopping the clock, you, we don't need to wait and give them an answer.
Right.
In my opinion.
Right, no, I, I understand, and I, I think that's a, I think that's a definite, yeah, that's correct, I believe that's correct, right? So I guess we need to be in communication with the, we can, we can approve the continuance, but we need to be in touch with that applicant and know that they fully understand that the clock is completely shut off, if that's even possible, if it's not, we just, they just have to go with GCG and, you know.
Yeah, so I, I just reviewed the dates, as of now, the day to close the public hearing will be on June eleventh, for, they filing date was February eighteen, so that will be the final day for them to, like, close the hearing, and I'm happy to follow up and just explain these.
If there's no more continuances, okay.
Yeah.
So in order to have someone besides GCG, they're going to have to agree to quite a long continuance?
Yes.
To allow us the proper...
Betting process.
Yes, and who, and, and in the end, a second company may have a higher price than what you started out with, so.
Yeah, and I guess just to, like, follow up, there was another part of it, that they were in front of the conservation commission, they mentioned the change of making a change on the turf of field, and also the conservation commission requires peer review, so it could also happen that the conservation commission says, we only want GCG, and they will still have to do that with them, because often with the projects that they have been coming into town is that the conservation commis, commission uses the same peer review that we receive the same report, because they feel comfortable with it, but there will be another part of it, that they will have to work with both of the planning board and the commission to have a better peer review, if that was the case.
So, let's touch base with the conservation commission and see if we're on the same page.
So we also are going to tell the applicant that we need updated calculations for their new design, it was not what was submitted, so we will not be, I mean, it already went, and it's on the process, but we aren't going to accept, we don't care what GCG or anyone says about that, that's not the project anymore, apparently, so they need to do something for that, and I think we want to talk about shot clock with that on them, too, because it, we're now looking at, we will be looking at application that's different than the application.
Right, right.
So I think that has to be brought up, or else, to not put the board in a bind.
Yeah, because the clock's not on us, because the application has been changed, right?
So, I mean, I think, A, the continuance should be saying, stop until we settle these things, in my opinion, tonight, if we offer that, right?
Well, I think in that case, we will have to wait, the continuance that they requested was to move it to the next planning board meeting, so that's the only thing that we can approve right now, but in that case, they will have to come in front of the board and discuss that directly here, so they can make an agreement, that will be the next steps that they take, that's the route that they're looking.
Because otherwise, I mean, we're going to have to say, no, it's no longer the application, and we have a way to do that politely, professionally, quickly, because I don't, I mean, this could, you could see how this could just get...
No, definitely.
Messy for everyone for no reason, it can be handled, like, if people are paying attention to the moving parts, it can be handled and keep it going, but, and then, we, I guess, last thing, we, there was railroad, it's near the railroad, I did quick scale, it's within, it's under, I believe it's under fifty feet, which is a typical railroad, again, I don't work for the road, I don't, it's not, you know, but I think it's something we had said, do, asking Lisa Mead if we have any responsibility to either conditions or anything about that, because the applicant didn't seem to know anything, and I don't want to leave that just completely, because we're not as familiar.
Yeah. Yeah, that was an ongoing question, okay. So, we have a list of those items, and we'll be putting them all in front of the appropriate parties, the applicant, the conservation commission, Lisa Mead, and have some direction on that for the next meeting on the eighth, where we continue this, too, and that'll give them enough time to review the other comments as well.
So I'll make a motion to move the public hearing on two forty to sixty Pleasant Street, Metro West Facilities LLC.
Second.
Seconded.
Deepa Wangidai.
Anna Tysmanitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay, so we have already covered item five. Item six is sixty-one Waverly Street, the, the letter that we have been talking about sending to the zoning board of appeals, there's, this is at the, right in front of numeral one.
I took a look at it, it looks like you had made some changes, or kind of put this together, thank you.
Yeah, so the first, the, the second part of it is, is directly from our letter on the first iteration of this project. I did take out the stuff on there that talked about the housing units and things like that, so I just went with the stuff that was appropriate to the site, the first part of the letter is our, you know, what, what we talked about in our process here, the part in red, I wasn't sure how to include, or if it was already included.
Yeah, the one thing I was going to say, the, on the first page, there's a spelling error in the one, two, three, or fifth paragraph, the word except for emergency vehicles, second sentence.
Oh, right.
Yep.
Two Cs.
Yeah, and then, the red language you had, I mean, I, I remember we talked about this, so you've definitely got the gist of what we're trying to say as a board, so maybe we should say that we're suggesting a way to move the parking spaces to a less visible location on the site.
Okay.
Something like that, make it a little bit more ambiguous, so that the zoning board of appeals can decide what that might mean, because it seems like the project keeps evolving, you know what I mean? So rather than saying to the backside of the building, say, to the less, less visible from...
From the East Union Street side?
Exactly, less visible from the East Union side, less prominent from the East Union side, might be a little bit more, giving the zoning board of appeals some flexibility to figure out what that means, because again, the project is going to, it seems to be continuously evolving.
Yeah, so the...
I don't know if it's going to change again.
They, they had the first, they had their first public hearing a month ago, and then last Tuesday, they had their first traffic peer review meeting, so the traffic peer reviewer from the town explained the comments that they had, and then they said that for the next meeting, we will be, which will be on May thirteen, they will come back to present the next changes on traffic, based on that.
So Anna, would, would, would you think the parking question would be taken care of if, if I, if it says, in the last, the last sentence on the first page, the board sees, sees little need for a sidewalk, because there is already one on the school side, and a deeper, deeper bank of trees, and greater distance between the new building and its parking, and the school may help soften the visual impact of the project, is that enough?
I think that's good, I don't know if that's enough, because I think we were concerned, from what I remember, it was like a bunch of parking right as you come into the building, so I think we wanted to, for the zoning board of appeals, to see if, if some of that could be squeezed to a less visible, so I don't think...
So, so that last sentence in red, the planning board further suggests...
Considering a way to move the parking spaces, how did I phrase it?
Finding?
To a less visible.
To, to...
Maybe it's just moving.
Move the parking spaces to decrease the visibility from Union Street, to significantly decrease the visibility from Union Street.
Should that go in the previous paragraph, where we are talking about the entrance and exit?
It could.
Because it looks like we are saying that there is a concern on the impact on Union Street, so does this just get added to that paragraph?
It could, it could.
I think one thing is about traffic, though, and the other is about visual impact.
Exactly.
So the parking is more about visual impact?
I kind of thought it belongs well after the mention of trees and visibility of the project, I kind of like where it is, in red, because it's about the visibility.
The planning board further suggests moving parkings, moving parking spaces...
To a less prominent and visible location.
From East Union Street.
Relative to East Union Street.
To a less...
To a less visible location from the East Union Street view.
To a less, yeah.
I'm just making notes to it, and then I can send you...
I think we've come up with, like, five different versions of how to say it, but I think they're all pretty much the same, kind of, make it less prominent, make it less visible from that side.
Was the tone okay? I have to admit, I have to admit, I was a bit frustrated when I was writing this.
No, I think the tone was, was appropriate for the situation, I thought it was spot on, so I personally like the changes, or the, the draft, so if we need to vote on it...
It can raise the message.
Okay.
Do we need to vote on it?
If you're okay with Elvaro and I doing the last sentence, massaging it?
I'll make a motion to approve the document as drafted, with the last sentence being massaged accordingly.
Second.
Roll call vote?
Deepa Wangidai, sorry.
Anna Tysmanitsky, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. And as it is, I assume you're then okay with me just signing it for the board?
Yes.
Okay.
As is, yeah, we just voted on it as it was.
Okay.
Are you signing it, the way it's written now, it's you signing it, and I'm fine with that, but if we're signing it for the board, it probably should be slightly different.
But, I was just taking it up.
Well, it's from the Ashland Planning Board, it's drafted from the Ashland Planning Board.
That's true.
So I think we're fine, if we vote for it as is. All right, so now we're doing approval not required?
Yes, and I think this is just an update, right?
Yeah, so Lisa has provided the Framingham Planning Department with a title search, with all the documentation, that, you know, it's, it's involving these properties, I think, from what she explained to me, is that in some deeds, at some point, they misplaced or gave the wrong explanation when it's like southerly, easterly border, things like that, so basically, that caused all this commotion and chaos to, like, figure it out, so once that information has been provided to the engineer and the Framingham Planning Department, they're trying to also make it make sense. We're hoping to meet next Wednesday amongst the engineer that's working with the Framingham Planning Department, the Framingham Planner, myself, and Lisa Mead, so we can finally clear every aspect of it, and they can go ahead and make a new miler, so we can, so it can come to the board and be finalized, but that's where it's standing as of now.
Sounds good.
Okay, so we're at the end of the major part of the agenda, Crystal asks for any updates, and then Alvaro and I have some updates, any updates from any of them?
I mean, just briefly, comprehensive plan, we're, we're on the part about strategies to meet the goals, and we will be actually having three meetings in May, because there's been a lot of work, and it's a lot of work, and, so the way it worked out is two extra meetings in May, and the plan would be that would finish up to go on to the next phase.
Okay, great. All right, so, and, and any other updates on committees, et cetera, et cetera?
No, I have not done more work on the, I think I was supposed to come in with more on Kate's to-do list, is what I call it, is this even on this?
Am I not even, yeah, number eight.
Number eight, yes, exactly. Do we consider Kate's to-do list number eight?
It, it is, I, I would prefer to call it planning board to-do list, but Kate is responsible for it, it's fine.
I just don't want to lose sight of that.
Um, I don't either, I mean, I'm hoping we can...
I don't have any update on that, I have not had a chance to move, to make much progress. Kate, is the next planning board meeting your last?
It is, so I'm hoping we can still...
I'll do my best.
No, the particular one was about having a process when, to make projects look like what we approved.
That's right.
And I had sent you some language, and I, Deepa, the way we left it last time, Deepa and Trish were going to work on a draft, I thought.
I started on it, and with my new work, I'm getting an exposure to a lot of different towns, and I'm starting to read how their process works, and it's very interesting that when I took that paper that you started off with, I came across a community that had a very different way of going around how their projects in town happen, so it felt like we shouldn't look at a process just with what we've done, there's so many different ways of doing it, so I didn't want to rush into it and kind of present something, but...
I, I agree, but except, there's, there's not oh-so-many ways, I've looked at probably, I bet fifteen, and I think I tried to fairly present them in, in what I presented, right? That was not, in fact, I didn't argue for Shrewsbury, you guys liked it, so, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I guess if I'm off the board and it doesn't happen, it's okay, but...
No, I think it should, it's something that we can keep track of, this, I think we had made progress on a lot of things that you had on that list, we shouldn't lose track of it, but again, creating process when literally half the board is going to change next month, I was hesitant to just come up with something, but I think it's a work in progress.
I would agree with that, I'm not into, like, just rushing it into a vote, I'd like to understand.
I mean, I didn't take it as a rush of a vote, I, I looked at it more like, I, I think we got some good progress, and I wanted to hear more thoughts, right now, we're only going to have one person replaced, that I'm aware of, on this board, not half the board, because one seat, we have somebody running, and the other seat, we've got no one, right? So, unless somebody writes in.
Right.
So we're really only replacing one person, that I'm aware of, not replacing half the board.
But even if, but even if that seat doesn't get filled at the election, it will get fe, it will get filled hopefully shortly afterwards.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is, I don't think we're voting the next meeting, I personally think Kate put a lot of work in, we made progress, and we should at least give it a shot and just keep talking about it, I don't think we need to vote at the next meeting, but if we can, I will try to bring in my homework, which was a little bit of work on the hotel thing for downtown, just so that I can hear Kate's thoughts officially while she's still a member of the board, publicly, rather than privately, and hopefully, we can make some progress on the other thing, if there's time, we're all really, really busy, so we may not have time, we'll do our best.
Right, so if, whatever anyone gets done for our eighth, we'll, we'll keep the agenda item on, and we'll discuss anything we have at that time, okay. So, updates, a hundred Chestnut Street, but let me start last week, actually, on the Pond Street James Road project.
One twenty-three Pond Street.
One twenty-three Pond Street. On Wednesday, the sixteenth, Alvaro and I and Deepa met with the architect and the developer of that project, this is something they had asked for right at the time that Peter was leaving, they'd asked for a meeting with Peter, since Peter obviously wasn't going to be there, Alvaro reached out to, to me, and I reached out to Deepa to, to fill in, right? So the, they were as, they had, I think, under agreement, another piece of property, a small piece of property, right where the, right where the front piece is on Pond Street. Um, and so they were acquiring this other small piece of property, which actually, and had this idea about making the. Just the whole site work a little better instead of this tiny little piece on Pond Street. So um, so they had done some drawings on that and just wanted some feedback. So um, Deepa and I looked at it and gave them some feedback.
Am I an abutter to this project that we're discussing right now?
No.
Okay.
No, it's way down. It's the one, it's the one way down there. So um, so we had that meeting and gave them feedback. I mean, my impression, Deepa can jump in that. Whatever the planning board decides to do with the project, the the addition, the addition of this small piece of property made the. Made the spirit of what they were trying to do stronger, better. Um, so um, and that's the feedback we gave them.
Yeah, and um, I think they listened to us the last time when we gave comments as planning board. And this acquiring, possible acquiring of this additional property will help kind of. Improve the design. Like, I, one of the comments that I had made is that visibility from the Pond Street to the open space behind. They actually could make that work because they were acquired, if they acquired that. So I think it was a great design solution. But and the other thing that I think important thing is they were willing to go back to the numbers to see if there would be a better mix of condos versus. Rent apartments. And they were willing to go through that exercise and see what is a better mix of the units in the campus. So I think. It's a team that's willing to listen and come with ideas. So hopefully when they come back, we'll have some good ideas.
Right, so they are looking to put together a more formal application. Obviously, everything been doing up till now, it's like there's not even an application on the table. But they are looking to put the package together and make a formal application sometime. Really after the election because they're going to need more than, you know, they're going to need a full board to look at the project, so.
Sounds good.
Any comments on that?
Nope.
Second, um, on Tuesday, the twenty, just just this past Tuesday on the twenty-second. Um, one hundred, one hundred Chestnut Street was doing its um, final walkthrough. Again, I guess Peter had been doing. Multiple walkthroughs with them with different punch lists and things like that. Left Elvro the list of the punch list, you know. And um, Elvro again asked if I could attend since since Peter's not here. Um, so we did that. We went through, we walked around the whole property around the outside. Obviously, that's more a component. They did give us a. A tour of the inside as well. They'd be happy to do another tour if anyone's interested in seeing it. Um, and so and so that was um, went through the punch list items that was signed off on and then. That was just for the planning department sign off.
Yeah, so before they get their occupancy permits, they need each department to go through it, water and sewer, DPW, conservation, each of them. So from our side, it was just. Looking at the landscaping and everything was installed correctly as the decision was basically marked. Everything seemed right on. My eyes and then the punch list that Peter left. So they now are just finishing up with the building department, which is the real, the finished.
Which Doug Scott's review.
Yeah.
So, so that's where that that was. Um, and then, yes, that's what I have on that, I think. Elvro, do you want to talk about the last project?
Uh, yeah, so today um, I got a letter or an email from Mass Housing, uh, letting us know that there has been a new application for a four E B. Uh, at fifty-five West Union uh, Street. Um, the email actually came kind of very late, honestly, to to me personally. I was not, I haven't received any of the. Materials or the, you know, usually we get the narrative, the architectural plans, civil plans, everything to distribute to the boards. Um, so we are, I I communicated with Michael, the town manager, about that. So, because they're requesting that. On May eighth to provide comments about this project. However, this email just came very late to us. Apparently, there was.
How large it is?
One. No, one sixteen units, one sixteen units. Um, apparently there was a site visit scheduled for yesterday. We.
Developer than the other two?
Yes. Um, we did not get any information, at least on my department, so I was not able to communicate either to the zoning board or the planning board. Um, so our next steps is basically to request for a extension to provide those comments so we can do it in a timely manner and also see we can get another site visit. Uh, with the developer, Mass Housing and the boards that are part of the process. Um, so we're working on that, but in the meantime, I guess. If the extension is not provided, I don't know if the planning board would like to see maybe a time if I'm able to get all the materials to send them.
I think seeing the materials is good. I I also recall, we had a memo from Peter at one point about our. Inventory for housing and the math, if you will, of whether we're at the threshold or not. And from what I recall, there was one project that was in legal process.
UGC.
UGC, um, and the math was relevant relative to that project. So for me, I'm all forgetting the materials. We're obviously. We're being targeted, obviously, because we are vulnerable right now. I'd like to see an update from the town of that memo from Peter. That has a very clear information about the status of that lawsuit. Because from what I recall, we're superbly close to the math. And that lawsuit can make a difference. So to me, I would like a real live update because something is not adding up to me that's been going on for a really long time. And uh, we need to know what's happening and why that's not resolved yet. Because we're going to continue to be a target until either one of these projects has an actual live permit and apartments being built. And it seems like the town is directly involved in a legal case that could prevent some of this from happening.
Yeah, I think that um.
I mean, that's my recollection of the math. I don't know if anyone else agrees with me.
The town's involved in, I guess we are because we're sort of.
I think we should have an update by now of some kind.
I was thinking about that, yeah.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah, it would be good to get an update about what's happening. I don't think that um, it has, I don't think it has um. An effect on what's happening on now with with.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is, I don't, am I crazy that I remember the math mattered? In other words, if that if that particular project.
Like the percentage, you just basically want like a updated number of the percentage.
We're over the threshold if that project clears legally. I could be wrong.
I don't recall at the top of my head.
I think we also needed the five oh one pond, possibly.
Okay, so I I'm not in the room for that one, so I can't really speak to where that that is.
I think our numbers mean that we need, we needed two of the large projects to to be in the threshold. We needed two.
All right, so because I'm not in the room for five oh one pond, I don't know where you guys are with that one. So I'll let you figure that out. But ultimately, we're being targeted. I think we need to figure out how to minimize that quickly.
But no, I'm happy to like look at the numbers and try to put something together for the next meeting. So at least we can have an updated S H I number with all the projects on the pipeline, yeah.
Yeah, so anyway, the um, you you also were able to talk to John Triff, and he was unaware as well, is that right?
Yes, like at least from our department, so like the the boards that I oversee had not idea of this.
And and I had, I already, I also touched base with Yolanda, who's currently chairing the select board, and. She did not know anything about the walkthrough. So apparently there was this thing scheduled that maybe went, that maybe went nowhere potentially except to Peter's email. And so. No one knew about it. So I believe Michael was going to reach out to the state and ask for, obviously.
Because it's supposed, the process is supposed to go to the select board. So.
Like I said, it's, yeah, so we don't know what happened in here. Elvro just got this email and was kind of like, what? You know, he called me this afternoon saying, Trish, I just got this email, right? So we don't know. We don't have anything to fill in. A lot of people are gone this week. And that's all the information we have to give right now. That something was kind of sort of scheduled. No one seems to have known about it. Michael is going to be reaching out to the state saying. Hey, no one knew about this. And assuming that the clocks will be all moved back, but that's all we know at the present time, so. I don't think so, but it's all we can do.
Okay. Yeah, but I guess just following up that thought, if the case was, yes, that will be, but if the case were that there is not a. Um, new deadline to provide comments, um, will the planning board want to look for like May, a potential day to look at the materials and submit something to Mass Housing? So if the comments are due May eighth.
Did you actually now receive the materials? Because, yeah, okay.
Why would May eighth be the deadline if no one has formally been noticed?
Well, so hopefully it's not, but he's saying if it is, worst case scenario, the state says, nope, May eighth, that or nothing. Do we want to try to put something together?
Before.
No.
We don't?
No, we have, we have a meeting on May eighth.
Town meetings on the seventh.
Meeting on May eighth.
Yeah. So.
Yes, what happens then is you notify us and we attempt to do an out of sort meeting.
Yeah, probably maybe online like we did before.
Exactly.
Um.
Is there any date that probably works for everybody?
You'd have to throw together Survey Monkey and hope that the majority of us can attend. There's only four of us, so hopefully. What do we need, three or two?
Three, three, like three.
Hopefully, three of us can be there. Let's not, I don't think we need to pick a date when we don't even know if if this is going to be a May eighth deadline. Once you know, let us know and hopefully we can make it work.
We can follow that process on Monday after I have more information or Tuesday I can send an email, try to sort it out to make a meeting if it's needed and then we'll go from there.
Yep. And I would say whoever's going to reach out to the state should convey the next planning board meeting happens to be on May eighth, which is the deadline. Therefore, we need more time.
Yeah, well, and it's it's not, and it's not just our feedback, but other committees as well. So, you know, again, this is zoning board of appeals, but. Yeah, so other other committees are going to want that time as well. So anyway, not a great way to end the meeting, but there you have it.
Yeah, and just kind of like from what I've also like know, um, the YMCA is gearing up to send an application at some point. Um, I don't know exactly if it's within the next month, but they have been looking at finalizing that process and submit a formal application. Um, and when the person that worked for the twenty Ponderosa Roads Verizon antennas. She also let me know that there potentially will be a couple more applications regarding that matter that will come to the planning board. Um, in the summer, so she didn't give me an exact day. She just gave me a heads up that there's potential to, for two applications of those to come.
Okay, thanks, Elvro. And there's no uh, meeting minutes?
No, not for this meeting.
Are we going to talk about the questions for the planning position?
Yes, so I received a few more, so I can put it on the screen. Uh, and I also put it on the binders.
My only question on on this was question three and seven are extremely similar. I personally liked seven more than three.
So they're not, they, you could interpret it in that way, but it, community planning is actually a term of art and means something. So I, I, yes, you could strike one, but they're not technically the same.
I understand. So then what we should do is. I mean, number six in that case may not be necessary. Because if three and seven are viewed as distinct differences, and I see what you're saying. I would take six out because I I think that six is just not necessary. Once they answer three and seven, you have enough to know. How they believe planners affect community. I would get rid of number six entirely. I think that's a soft question. I mean, it's sort of, everybody knows the answer to it. And really, what you're going after is how will this person approach community planning? And three and seven get you there and they tell you what the person believes planners do relative to community. So I would personally simplify it and get rid of number six.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that that I think um, number six, it doesn't have the weight of the other, of the other questions, right?
It's more like a touchy feely question.
And.
Where it's like, oh, they're really important. Yeah, we all know that. So I would get rid of it.
Yeah, so I mean, I I think these are, these are great questions. Um, I did not, I admit, I did not submit any.
No offense to whoever wrote it.
But um, and and so far, we have no um.
No applicants?
No applicants.
Do we have? If I may ask, like how, how, is this, does this just kind of get posted? Or is there an active recruitment that happens? Like, do we?
It's it's posted in multiple locations, not only just on our website, but it's up on the places where.
Yep.
Planning people look to find jobs.
Mass A P A.
Yeah, so for example, like, in this, if I could ask, was the posting requiring a specific level of experience?
Yes.
And what was it?
I think it's three to five years.
Has there been discussion as to lowering that to give some flexibility, like?
I think the thing, I think the, and I can't say specifically what the numbers are, but there have been applications coming in.
I see.
But there haven't been people maybe that are as qualified as we would like, especially given.
Got it. So the applications are coming in, just no, no one has risen above the initial round.
Yeah, yeah. It's not that we're not getting any applications. I don't know what those numbers are, but I think there are applications coming in, but. Nothing, nothing that they wanted to jump on, let's say. I think I think Jen is looking into an organization called Planners in a Pinch. Where you can like a temporary service for planners.
Sounds troubling.
Well, you you, understanding that behind.
No offense, isn't that like the exact contradiction of planning?
Yeah, but but you have to understand that a lot of the, as in all of our jobs, there's a lot of.
Emergency planning.
There's a lot of paperwork that needs to be done and things that. Right.
Take, we, we can just take Kate's checklist and we're all set. Sorry, Kate.
Well, I mean, if that's um, an option, though, like when we've had interim town managers, we've had some good stuff come out. They, right, they've.
No, I'm all for emergency planning.
I.
Do it.
I would assume instead of emergency, it's interim and there could be, there could be some.
It's just that there's a lot of day to day stuff, as everyone knows, that needs to happen. That's someone just needs to do. And it doesn't need to, doesn't need to be someone who understands the heart of Ashland.
I mean, I would argue if that's still, it's not emergency but interim, that the planning board should still have, be involved in that process.
Um, yeah, I'll I'll ask about it.
Because there could be less or more qualified people doing those or more or less aligned with.
Yeah, I'm less, um, I'm, I, I don't know what that process will be. I don't know even if um. Jen has reached out to to really try starting that process. It was just a matter of, hey, this might take a while to get the right person. So maybe it's just getting, you know, basically a temporary person in there. So I, for one, um. I I'm happy to help if she needs assistance with that, but I also trust Jen's ability as been professionalism to find someone that she thinks can do that job until we. Select a a town planner, a permanent town planner. So again, knowing the weight of things that are on my agenda and everyone's agenda. I'm not sure I want to slow down that process in order to grill someone with a lot of questions for a temporary position that I'm just hoping someone will take and help us out. We'll see. I'll definitely talk to Jen about it, but.
Into a long term and then you're having someone have an impact on our community that.
I think if if there's, if the temporary turns into a long term, then I assume they'd be having to go through the, a process versus a temporary, you know, thing. So um.
I guess the best way to approach it is can we find out? If this planner temp concept is being considered, what the term of the temporary assignment would be.
Well, yeah, how does that?
Start that. Let's let's get some basics so that we understand it.
That question would be.
Think we as a planning board should have some role to play.
Yeah, that question would be, how does that temporary process potentially relate to the permanent process?
Yep. And the other thing I was going to ask is if we can see the posting, I, that would be helpful for me.
It's online.
Great, awesome.
So the same post that went out to the organizations, I believe is the same post.
Yeah, I think LinkedIn and A P A, those are the quickest ones to find.
I'm just surprised that it's only three to five year experience, though.
Well, apparently there is, at the present time, and this was, say, two weeks ago, that there were four or five other towns looking for planners. So it's also a competitive process. So um, potentially, so it may not be easy and it may not be quick. Um, hence the need for some temporary help. Right, so.
Great.
And. Yeah, so I think, is there anything else on the agenda for tonight?
I'll make. I'll make a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Deepa Engadai.
Anna Tresmanetsky, aye.
Catherine Jurzakai.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Thank you, everybody.